I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and the United Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you.
Our vote call, Rachel Schlesky is here, Gladys Moore, here, Richard Hawley, Richard Janelli, Pat Johnston, Frederick Hara, David Trainor, Kathy Monar. Emmanuel Ramirez, for Alessandos, Amy Spolino.
For everybody who's got a microphone, everybody needs to be on mic. We've had some sound issues, so we have the microphone release on.
I got you.
All right. Recognitions. Anything to make? Okay, public participation. Okay, we have minority and bilingual teaching. And there's a very small written name underneath it and I can't read it. Is there somebody here?
We have a whole army here, we're good.
Oh, okay.
There's a lot of it is for one.
Is one person speaking?
No.
Three, four, counting four.
Oh, okay, that's all right. If you want to come up and state your name and... All right, I'll do mine.
On behalf of Western Connecticut State University and for your community access program, I want to thank you guys for giving us an audience. I also want to recognize Kevin Wallston, who came by our program this summer and saw our Excel program, high school program, and teaching pipeline. And just thank you very much today. We have three students here to talk to you a little bit about the Minority of bilingual Teaching Pipeline, where they are right now, where they're going, and what's going on later on, which you'll get an invitation to. Thank you.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. My name is Jas Meli Rodriguez and I'm currently a senior at Danbury High School. I was born in Danbury, but my family is originally from the Dominican Republic. They were the people who also taught me how to speak Spanish. It was my first language, my first language. Like my fellow peers, I'm part of the Minority and bilingual Teaching Pipeline. This program is a partnership between Western Connecticut State University and Danbury Public Schools. It provides students with the opportunity to get firsthand experience teaching. This program has two parts, a summer semester and a fall semester. And after completing the course, students receive three college credits as well as elective credits from Danbury High School.
Good evening, my name is Gloria Dixon. I was born in Nigeria, I'm a junior at Danbury High School, and I'm also part of the Minority and bilingual Teaching Pipeline. At the end of our program, we have an annual poster session. In this poster session, we present the work we've completed in both our summer and our fall sessions. During the summer, we taught students at Elswood Elementary School and completed lesson plans. Currently, we now observe teachers at Danbury High School, where we learn the importance of class management, teaching skills, differentiation, and assessments.
Good evening, my name is Frenchie Perez. I was born in Bolivia. I'm a senior and I'm part of the ESL program at Danbury High School. And I'm also part of the Teaching bilingual Pipeline program. This night, we're here to, because it will be an honor for us to have you at our poster session observing the work that we have been doing during all this program. Our poster session will take place on Thursday, December 6th, from 6:00 to 7:30 p.m. at Westcombe University in the Midtown Campus. It's important for us, have your presence there, due to your support and commitment for our program. Thank you for your support and time. We hope to see you on December 6th. Have a great evening.
Thank you.
So, what is being in our right now are invitations?
To thank you.
The poster session. Does anyone have any questions if they would like to ask us at this time?
Anybody have any questions?
Thank you so much.
Thank you. Okay, Melinda Scott.
I'm back. So, Melinda, I just wanted to follow up with the comments that I made last time. So, I was very excited after public participation to hear Mr. Wallston speak of the plans to go forward with the LGBTQ training next year. That is amazing. And then, I was a little saddened, I must admit, when I made the foolish mistake of reading the comments online to the fabulous article that Zach wrote about it. So, I don't know if anybody else read the comments, but wow, like some seriously hurtful stuff, like bad, really bad. So, I just felt like I needed to bring that to everybody's attention to just point out that much more, how much we need this training. And not just our students, and not just our teachers, and not just our parents, but obviously the community at large, because there was some really ugly stuff that was said. So, that was super sad, but I'm glad we're going forward. And then, we've started something new. Shannon Hankler does our announcements at Stadler High School every morning with the kids. And we've been doing shout-outs every week to different groups of people, which is kind of cool, because everybody really loves to hear their name on the announcements. My kids got super excited when they were mentioned the other day, so I thought I would do the same thing here. So, while I was sitting at the meeting last time, a couple of things came up. And so, because I really want to talk back to you guys, but I can't when I'm sitting in there, right there at the meeting, I composed two emails, one to Mr. Janelli and one to Mr. Trainor. I'm sorry, he's not here to hear the thanks. So, I sent those emails in the middle of this nine o'clock-ish hour, and both of them got back to me right away the next day, which I think is pretty darn fabulous. I know that you guys are all just as busy as we are, so thank you, Mr. Janelli, for doing that. Thank you, Mr. Trainor. It will be recorded that he did that as well. So, that was great. And then, I also wanted to give a shout-out to Ms. Spolino, who came to our PTO meeting again last night. So, it's just really exciting to see those board representatives come and play that role in our schools, and it's just nice to have that. So, thank you to those people.
Thank you. Rand Suri.
My name is Kieran Suri and I'm here from AIS. And I'm here to talk about, um, our club, Bridges of Peace and Hope.
So, what do you do with Bridges of Peace and Hope?
Well, we help people around the world. Like, example, we helped build the Gada Pit in Africa. And we also sent seeds to support it, go to help for the hurricane. And that really helped them a lot. And also, and they're, we're wanting to help make this Bridges of Peace and Hope Club spread around the whole world. And they are starting new clubs everywhere.
So, John Farrell and Meg McQuinno and several of our teachers are running at AIS. And it's been a wonderful experience for our family and for many others. I think we have at least, what, 30 students? Do we do that?
Great job.
Hi, my name is Tricia Robinson. I am the AIS PTO president. I'm mom to kid in Korea, who you just saw. I am today here to talk about Spanish. I love Spanish. I learned it when I was in Indiana, from kindergarten through junior in high school. We had Level 11-12, where I was in Indiana. And I talked with several parents whose kids have finished AIS and have some strong concerns about what will happen once my child graduates. I've been told, basically, middle school has eliminated all advanced Spanish. And I've also heard some things that I'm not sure what is, what is right about what is required to get into most colleges in Connecticut. I've heard that three years taken in school is required. And I've heard from a Spanish teacher whose child was accepted to a UConn major campus that he just needed to complete Level 3 to become accepted to the college campuses. So, the word that is spreading around is that, basically, don't bother taking Spanish until you're in high school. And you can take 1, 2, 3 there, because all the advanced work that you're doing doesn't help you once you get to high school, because then you have to take three years. And there's not enough classes once you get to, Spanish classes once you get to high school. So, it would be really helpful to know what is, what is real, because I think there's a lot of misinformation. But our kids have learned a lot. We have one of our Spanish teachers here tonight. I'm really impressed with what we've learned already. My daughter's in second grade, my older daughter's in fifth grade. And it is really important, especially with our community being over 50% Hispanic, for us to make sure that the non-speaking Spanish people have access to be able to learn this language. I wish it could spread along to everybody in Danbury. It is really important. Languages are very important to our community. You know, we have 58 languages to speak in the Danbury community. If everybody can speak at least two, that would really help with our communication, with our acceptance, with our love, with everybody else. So, thank you, I appreciate any information on that.
Thank you. Okay, that's it on our list. Is anybody else wasn't on the list that would like to speak?
I didn't get the young lady's name, but my daughter, Isabella Poty, that's her favorite club. The only problem is, it doesn't happen every week. She wants it every week.
Thank you. Anybody else? Okay, thank you so much. The consent calendar.
That the Board of Education approves the items on the consent calendar, except it's 18-120 through 18-122 as recommended.
Seconded by Mrs. Malinaro. Any discussion? There are none. All those in favor? Opposed? Same? Most curious. One way representative spotlight your school, the Academy for International Studies Elementary Magnet School.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you for hosting us today, we appreciate it. I want to start by, thank you, Ms. Kim Thompson, for the substitutes, they sure have been great. We've been able to do a good little planning, our gathering has been phenomenal. So, on behalf of the staff, thank you, we appreciate it. Before we get to our video, I'd like to introduce three very special students, Jo Gerstenthal, Sidney Borst, and Emma Pyers, who are representatives of our student leadership.
Thank you for inviting us tonight. I would like to start off with a story of mine, and it starts off with a kindergartner named Brooke at my school. She's in Mr. Knott's class. And the first day, I saw her crying on the bus, and I thought, oh, I should help her. And the second day, I decided I should sit with her and help her. And one day, I came home with a note that said I was very kind to Brooke, and maybe I should get on the bus at her stop. So, I thanked my mom for driving me to her stop, and I got on with her, and she had never got on the bus yet. So, it was a big accomplishment for her to get on the bus, and I was very proud of her at that moment. And then, she came and she got on at my stop. And within a weekend, she was racing me and my sister to the bus, which was a huge accomplishment. So, I think this helps AIS, because we want to help everybody feel like they're welcome and that they should never feel like they're down or that they're feeling bad.
Hello, my name is Jo Gerstenthal. I am currently in the fifth grade of the Academy for International Studies. This is my second year in student leadership. This is also my second year as the co-editor of the school newspaper. And I think that the school newspaper is a wonderful addition to our school. For one, it gives us a voice to all students, because all students can contribute to it. It also showcases the many talented and creative writers we have at the Academy for International Studies. It also promotes a sense of community and connectedness among the students. Finally, it's fun. We feature trivia questions, movie reviews, interesting facts, and more. I'm proud to be a part of it. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Emma Pyers, and I'm here to talk to you about, well, why do we have a student leadership club? Student leadership helps kids and makes them feel like they have a voice in our community. It also makes, makes us feel that we, that our voice matters. And also, as I say, it, well, in the student leadership club, it's not about being the boss or being the leader, it's about, it's about doing the right thing as a team to make the world a better place.
The kids are just going to hand down our first edition of the newsletter, so that they're to get to you guys, who could see what they've been writing about. They not only wrote it all themselves, but they self-edited too, so, yeah. Okay, thanks.
Let me introduce our next guest, Coach Mark Pollockman, our math coach over at AIS. Talk about school climate.
Good evening, everyone. I have been in the Danbury Public Schools for the past 10 years, and this is my first year in my role as an instructional coach. And I will say that there was a bit of trepidation transitioning into a new role, into a new building. But I am happy to say that that trepidation was quite unwarranted when I walked into AIS. It's quite impressive what happens in that building every single day. And it starts with the people you see sitting back there, the dedicated teachers that are working in that building every single day for our kids here at Danbury Public Schools. One thing that always constantly impresses me is that every single thing that they do in their classrooms, and I've had the opportunity to be in all of them, is every single thing they do is in the best interest of kids. It's truly a blessing to have an opportunity to work there, to see these kids, how amazing these kids are, speaking about all the things that are happening at that building. And why not? Mr. Roche gave me the opportunity to speak here, I jumped at it. So, may have been only at AIS for a short time, but it certainly feels like home already. Stay at teachers, love you as well.
One last guest speaker, Mr. Matt Kellman.
Hi, everyone. I'm here to talk about depersonalization, which is something we're doing at AIS. So, after eight years in first grade, I joined fourth grade to teach math with my wonderful teammates over there who didn't want to be identified, but... So, I know you guys don't always get to hear the good things, because usually when the parents come, they're unhappy. So, I wanted to share some of the good things that we've noticed. So, as a teacher, some of the things I like is I get to focus on one subject. So, I can really get to know my content well, I can differentiate and make sure that I'm meeting the needs of all learners, which I was able to do as a first grade teacher, but I had to cover many subjects, and now I can focus on one. One great thing is I get to know all the students in the grade level, not just a small subset. So, I get to work with 67 students as opposed to 20 or 22. We all know that kids need to move, so they get to move, because every 70 minutes, they're switching classes. And one thing that's great is I really get to work closely with them, all teachers at our school library, but because with the permanent isolation, we all need to be on the same page, or else someone's waiting in the hall for someone else to finish, we're all, you know, constantly talking, which is a nice relationship to have with them. And one thing that I think the kids would say is, they love that they get to do science now. So, some of those subjects that are traditionally bound by the wayside for the tested subjects, we now get to use science for 70 minutes a week, which is a dramatic increase over what they've done in previous years. And finally, I did ask one student today why she likes it, and she just said that she likes being able to have experiences with each teacher as opposed to staying in one room all day. So, thank you for allowing us to try that at our school.
All right, let's start up the presentation, please.
The devotion behind our school. Every year, we try to give students that will share with you in their native tongue, how to stay in peace from their own earth in their world and their culture. Okay, so let's hear how this is. May peace prevail. In France, please step there. When they are down, and cold, and poor, and the children are dead. Esteles, que la paz prevalezca en la tierra. In Europe, as the land of power, we are the children. Es por aquí, no hay más lujos que la ciudad de tierra. En China, que la paz se vuelva a la tierra. In England, que la vida sea más amada en el aire. In Greece, que la paz prevalezca en la tierra. In Germany, wo größte Lied aus Erden sein. In Germany, mein Lied wird überall verleitet. Esteles, que la paz prevalezca en la tierra. In the Bible, die Schöpfung ist für uns. Que es un amor de Dios.
This is some math.
What were you using to help me solve this?
I used, I'm still learning. Yeah, 521, 215, and I go back, I go back there, so I got 200 back. I go back again, I was still learning, so I go back again, I got the 84, that's four words, and I have 30. So, what I did was, I went down five, 35, that's 31, plus 70, I got five. So, what I did, minus 221, which is 20, plus 5, I got 30, 63. Then, minus 321, 62. So, what I did was, if you add this and this together, you have 30, then you add these together, you have 30, and that's, I got my 30.
I'm going to do one thing. I'm going to use one letter for the surface, and I will try to look at the house, um, trying to check the value of the number, and I have to do that. And then, you have to look at the second square, so we need to know that we have to do 429, so I have to wait sometimes, I have to look at the idea. With this, then it was...
Fourth grade, measuring two meters.
But, because I needed to break it down, I didn't do that. So, I did, um, 25 times 30, and I go back down, I did 25 times 30, equals 75, and I go, I weigh the 10, like the zero, and I just add it down, and, um, so I got this number. And then I, and then I needed to add the other one from the 25 times 30, which is 32, so I did that, so I, 25 times 30, I added 50 to 350, and I got the 120, and I needed to times that by 30.
By 3. Elevator final solution?
I got 25, and so it was 20.
Eh eh eh, beret, beret, beret. El gallo, el gajo, la carina es calzado. El tío, el tío, en tu carro, en tu ventillo. Ah ah ah, mariquita, ya te va. Eh eh eh, mariquita, ya te fue. In in in, mariquita, ya te vi. Oh oh oh, mariquita, ya voló. Uh uh uh, mariquita, ya te tu. No más, yo me he hecho, soy tío, tío, tío. ¡Eh! ¡Eh! ¡Eh!
This is an example of Bridges of Peace and Hope.
This is John Farrell, Bridges of Peace and Hope. Bridges of Peace and Hope Club.
Bridges of Peace and Hope Club. That's me getting signed over a trash bag that day, so it was good. Alika, thank you for taking the opportunity for allowing us to speak about our great school, for supporting us, Dr. Sawa. Oh, I thought you were... So that's Slime, and that's me. I'd like to thank Mrs. Chalesky for being our kindergarten interventionist last year and helping students get on grade level. You may have heard we were down a number of staff last year, but we had the highest math performance we've ever had as a school. That's because of the people back here and the wonderful staff that we have. You heard our students geek. We work very hard, as you know, and we appreciate all your support. Thank you, everybody, for listening to us. You can see some of the amazing achievements that we had last year in math. And you may have heard, Math Olympiads is coming to AIS. 25 registered students will be performing in our Math Olympiads Club. We are not going to stop. We're not going to relent until we reach the top. It's one thing to be good. We want to be the very, very best. Unless we're at 100% in everything, we will continue to persevere. That's what it's all about. Thank you, Mr. Genellios, that are just saying hello. We have the world's greatest social worker back there, Mary Lavassar, who set that up, and we appreciate her time. Thank you, parents, students, and everybody for coming. We appreciate your time. I would love to. So because of the green earth, we did get an opportunity to visit Washington, D.C. It was very interesting. We visited American University, and they had some great sustainability presentations. We were looking at a number of components to that trip. One, we met a lot of people from all over the country, a lot of initiatives. There's a lot of science to be taught, so it's a good thing we're bringing science back. In terms of gardens, you see at our school, that was our school, the sustainability piece with the composting. There's just a lot going on. We learned a lot from various agencies, some colleges and states around the country that really had some novel ideas and how to approach it that are cost-neutral and that we can do within the context of our day. So it was an exciting trip. We had parents with us, teachers. It was a great time. It's an honor. And again, Green National Green Ribbon Award for Sustainability and Environmental Science. The only school in Connecticut. We got 100%. That's our goal for everything. I know we're just under 10 minutes, right? So do you have any questions? Yes, sir. Sure.
But you mentioned last week the Rachel attending with me, the luncheon that you had.
Yes.
And attending there with the police department, fire department, as well as Board of Ed representatives. I could pray to it myself.
Okay, thank you. And each of the students, I had letters on tables that were written to the fire department, police department, and Board of Ed. And I just wanted to share with some of the members on Board of Ed, some of the questions or wishes that students had. My thoughts, I would give this to Debbie and have circulated or emailed to the board members. But for example, one of the dear Board of Ed members, I would like to have four recesses and my classes and own my own iPad. We would like our parents to have lunch with us four days a week. This one here says, I'd like 50 recesses. And I'd like, we should have a week off. It goes on and on. The grades were very cute. The conversations with the grades were very interesting. One of the most challenging questions I got, I couldn't answer, was, can you make a wish come true? I didn't. My mouth was open. I just shook my head and said no. I really didn't know how to answer such a question, but it was in the lightning insurance. Thank you.
We appreciate it. Thank you.
Just a quick second. Congratulations to you guys. The work that you're doing is amazing. And to the students who spoke tonight, you guys are very impressive. To the first young lady who spoke, I think you understood the importance of what you did for that kindergarten and how that helped her. But just to give you a little perspective on what happened in her mind, I was that little kid that cried on my first day of school and second and the third. Thank you, Ken. And I had somebody happy.
First day of school.
Yeah, somebody happy. And I had someone like you who also did the same thing, and that changed my world. That was a major thing for me at that age. So congratulations to you for doing a great job.
Anybody else?
Thank you. Thank you for coming.
Oh, one more announcement. Switcho.
One more thing. We would love for you to mark on your calendars April 4th and 5th of 2019, the AIS Theater magnets are about to embark upon our sixth show since the school has been opened. The show is going to be called Twin Dorella, and we are attempting our very first musical this year, so we would love it if you came. So please mark April 4th or 5th, probably around 7:00 p.m., but we'll let you know for sure when we get closer. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Mr. Genellios, turn all those demands over to the board yet. Okay, and student representative.
Hello, my name is Joanna Wetchell, and I'm the VOG treasurer at Danbury High. I just have some updates for you about what's going on at our school since we last met. Thursday last week, October 18th, Girls Cross Country at our school won the first FCA championship in school history. So that was amazing. The boys put on an impressive performance as well. They came in second place. Club fair for our school is this Friday, and I just wanted to point that out because we think for VOG and for the whole school that it's a great opportunity for the students, and especially the new freshmen and stars. So many, they have the chance to check out the different clubs that are offered since there are so many at the high school. And it's a chance for them to get involved since they are so new. And for people that have been there already, for them to find something new and find something, a club that they can enjoy. Also, yesterday, last night, boys soccer defeated Trumble, and that put them in the number one spot in the FCA. So they will be competing. I'm not exactly sure. I think either sometime this weekend or next week, but they have the number one seed in the FCA. Also, just a little update. Our first quarter closes November 9th. And flex is, we have flex at our school. It's a new thing we're trying out, and it's continuing, and it seems to be successful. And Mr. Donovan, he has a group of teachers that he meets with regarding flex, and he just talks about flaws that I might have or views that they have about flex and improvements that they're trying to make. So we're constantly trying to improve upon this new flex system that we have. And like I said the last time, personally, I think it's very useful for me as the Board of Governors. It's helpful to meet with our advisor during school instead of having to try to find time. Very helpful to keep up on work in my grades and make up tests and stuff like that. Also, last thing. Herb Jones of Danbury High, he held our first event in the Black Box recently with a group of students from surrounding districts who were part of their yearbook staff. That was the first main event in the new Black Box. And also, Lachryshaw was in the Black Box yesterday to meet with superintendents and other legislators. So it is being used within the school and also outside of the school. That's it. Does anyone have any questions?
Any questions? Thank you so much.
Thank you.
All right, action items.
Small Improvement Grant. That the Board of Education approved the submission of the Small Improvement Grant to State Department of Insular Services in accordance with 18-123.
Seconded by Mr. Santos. Do we have any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor? Aye. Opposed? Staying? Motion carries.
2018-19 Board of Education Goals. That the Board of Education approved from the table, 2018-2019 Board of Education Goals.
Seconded by Mrs. Cooper. Any discussion on that? Yeah, so it's the next, the next round. On table, motion. Okay, so all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
2018-2019 Board of Education Goals. That the Board of Education approved of 2018-2019 Board of Education Goals in accordance with 18-124.
Seconded by Mrs. Mollinero. Do we have any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Staying? Motion carries.
September 2018 Operating Results Analysis General Fund Grants Projects. That the Board of Education accepted September 2018 Operating Results Analysis General Fund Grant Projects in accordance with 18-125.
Seconded by Mr. Santos. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Superintendent's report.
Yes, thank you. She just mentioned we met yesterday at the Bike Box, the Western Superintendent's Group. We're calling a reasonable purchasing meeting. It's our normal group that meets in this sector of Fairfield County. What we decided to do was, beginning last year, was to call up our money, I think I've mentioned it to you in the report, and do a combined purchase. And they hooked up with Danbury, which is, our purchases are pretty major. And it's helpful to the districts that are smaller that we can have the compliance of requirements and then get better pricing. So we want to talk to us and what we're doing and our movements in that direction. But also, we talked about legislation, ways of working together. And we used some examples of the law that, um, the school climate law, in terms of the challenge it presents the district. And the point that we made to them, these are open intentions, but they're unintended consequences relative to implementation and funding that they really don't have the knowledge or the background to think about as they go through here. So we weren't trying to be assertive, but if there's a good idea, and most of them we'd all support, but how do we get there and have best practice in doing that? So we had pretty substantial conversations. I got to mention, though, all Danbury was, we provided the venue. The invitations came from another source, and we left a few legislators off in 70 Black Boxes. I felt terrible about that. But most of, we had about, how many attend?
Seven or eight.
Seven or eight that did attend current candidates as well as those that are running for office. We agreed that it was a good first step, and we would then reconvene after the elections, start off on some of the ideas of efficiency and legislation that would be helping each other. So it's a pretty good meeting. I don't want to comment, Joe.
No, I thought it went well. The student data privacy clearly was a big topic on the agenda. All boards are dealing with it. So we need to sign up every single venue that we share student information with. We sent the digital contract later, privacy, which is complicated for me. We have over 100-plus applications that have various states of data information that are shared. So every single district has to comply at the state level. So it's a complicated process, and we all use the same power school and busing softwares in that sense. It'd be easier to have one large blanket document since that every school is trying to negotiate all of these agreements. It's kind of, it's problematic.
The law needs to be tweaked, then it can happen. Yeah, 169 towns paying more to negotiate the contracts with many, many vendors. So it didn't seem to make sense. Intentions for protection. And it all came about through the SATs. And they were excluded from the...
Yes.
They started, and so they were trying to find a solution. Those are the kinds of things we talked about. As a result of your retreat, you talked about, Rachel came in, about a revised spotlight through your school?
Yeah, I think the, not that we don't appreciate the spotlight at your school, but we want to have that. Every other meeting was the consensus from our workshop. So there's a revised schedule in the packet just to take a look at. So we wouldn't see AIS again until two years now.
Veterans Day update.
So two different... So we have two different updates for the Board of the Community. One, for this Veterans Day, we are calling principals to see if any of our schools have any formal recognitions for Veterans Day. And for the schools that are, we will be looking to extend invitations to our veterans in the community to be part of the exercises where appropriate. Additionally, we're still investigating what Veterans Day can look like in 2019, 20, and beyond. Investigating what a hybrid day could look like in our school community. Dr. Casemiro has been working on a plan of what this could look like for us schools. It came to a halt, but I'm going to ask Dr. Casemiro to share a couple of highlights.
Sure. So just some ideas that we have been tossing around. I mean, we're still in the process of soliciting various stakeholder groups. The idea of having a hybrid day where it's partially academics, but then marked as some sort of celebration or commemoration, bringing some veterans in in some shape or form, and utilizing various schools and different networks. Some people, some of our parents and grandparents are veterans. So we would ask folks to host local veterans, medal honor recipients, local heroes or other distinguished guests or authors. Give patriotic-themed musical performances given by school chorus and band groups. Patriotic readings and recitations of presidential addresses and military-era heroes that have been led by students. School-wide national anthem and flag raising ceremonies, move the silent taps, and a variety of veterans groups such as fighting drug wars to attend and perform in purity uniform dress. So we're kind of excited about some of the possibilities and opportunities. We would infuse some of the academics in there with a variety of essays, contests, why we celebrate Veterans Day, photo gallery walks, community gallery walks of our local veterans, and opportunities to share stories. So we're continuing to solicit ideas and to build sort of a quilt of a variety of activities that schools can participate in and to start to begin to communicate formally a plan. So there's some nice ideas on the table.
Did you give Mr. Saied? We don't hear it said something.
We did, we did. So part of the draft hybrid model that Dr. Casemiro just shared, we actually shared it with Mr. Saied a couple of weeks ago. It's a same hybrid day model that he shared with some leaders in our community and is looking to continue to investigate on our app to see how, you know, what they see in the community, the veterans community, has an interest in this kind of thing.
Thank you. I skipped this. Say something, Kat. That's something you were just studying. That's something you were just studying. It comes out of the Samuel Thomas. And it's an app for, you know, we have the program, if you see something, say something. And our kids are pretty well-versed on that. We do have a system of reporting incidences. We're looking at a more formal system. There are some, we had to fire, we had the police chief here on Thursday, and talking about the options. There are a lot of things that go with it. So as we study, we're trying to find some schools, districts that are similar in size to look at the operational challenges that we have. So it's something that keeps you informed, but it may be something really helpful to us as we move out for our kids and our community. I am done. Thank you.
Okay. District Strategic Planning.
I'd like to take a minute. One of the things that I, as I listened to the board when we talked about goals in the retreat, and I sat and had a deep reading with Rachel, was the idea of a strategic plan, and what is, of goals, and how we're operationalizing the work that we do. There are some things tonight that we're doing, self-contained, things that we're doing within the math program and other venues. A number of years ago, we had an enhancement plan that we had to implement. We utilized that plan. As we met this August, we decided to look at all of the plans that we have. We had the coherence plan, we had our vision, mission, theory of action. And they started working on coalescing of those plans. I, which is the timing was great, because the board also talked about some kind of strategic goal over time, at least four or five years. So what we thought would be a great idea for us to do is to do it in conjunction with the work that he answered, which is looking at root causes for needs and different shaping of our program based on a neglected group looking at our work. So we talked about taking about a number of folks and all that, Kevin, speak to it. Representative group that would look at and start crafting a vision, which will be an outward, we call the vision of a graduate that we have. And I'll let Kevin talk about it. I think the timing is great. We have documents that need to be updated and really have a, you know, we do have the population when we did, when we put it together some years ago. So the timing would be terrific, which would then give you an opportunity to set your goals for the upcoming year for a multi-year basis, based on the needs that we've identified in this school system. Kevin?
So yes, the timing couldn't be more perfect. So we understand and recognize that for our strategic plan to be successful, we need to identify ways to effectively engage and communicate the plan and communicate throughout this process. So on a very fundamental level, we need to kind of apply the five Ws, if you will, approach to determining key elements of our plan. And some of our initial objectives will be around generating engagement and commitment of key stakeholders. So one of the first things we want to do is identify community stakeholders who will be appropriate people to be at the table to develop the new mission of our district. And so that team of stakeholders will determine if the mission is still representative of our Danbury community. As part of that process, we'll also engage in a process called the Portrait of the Graduate, and then revisit our mission and see if it's still representative of Danbury Public Schools. Throughout this process, we also want to build awareness of the strategic plan at all levels of the district, encourage community participation in the process, generate enthusiasm for the plan, and ensure that the plan is disseminated accordingly. We recently scheduled a meeting in early December to meet with the Connecticut Center for School Change to help facilitate this effort. Tentatively, we're looking at twelve eleven as the day. It will be an all-day meeting with community stakeholders. So probably the next couple of days, we will be firming up those dates. And again, tentatively, right now, twelve eleven will be the date. We anticipate that it will be an all-day effort, twenty-five to thirty people invited. We have like thirty different names or community members, stakeholders who should be invited to the meeting. Our hope is that day would yield in the development of a revised mission statement and portrait of a graduate, which will lead to subsequent work identifying the goals and strategies to help operationalize the mission. So we're excited, hence the date twelve eleven, getting this work started. We have an administrative staff who since late August was, I think, excited about the idea of pulling all of this work together that had been done. We appreciate and we want to show your honor of the work that was done. And I think, quite frankly, all of the work that was done allows us to kind of accelerate the process. So we're looking forward to this.
We're going to ask for three board members to participate too actively in that sub. So they'll, we asked them to help us out with that. And for example, I think the comment was made to our facilities committee, and I couldn't agree anymore. You know, folks need to know the pressures that we're under, not only regarding the curriculum, which we focus here, but you know, what about our facilities? What about our resources? These are all things that will be different categories for us to look at. Then we'll invite stakeholders from the town council, the town municipal workers, and parents. Those are the folks that are really, really impacted by what's going on. Making them knowledgeable of our issues, they do what they call SWOT analysis, where there's strengths, weaknesses, opportunities, and threats. And that's what we're going to do that day. You know, we talked for an hour about facilities, about the resources, about the building. This is a way of communicating that in an organized way, and then moving forward. So like I said, the timing couldn't be any better for us to do that. And we'll have different categories, we talked about, not only teachers and parents, but we have different ethnic clubs in town that need to participate, change in the community that we want to represent. So I think it'll be an enriching opportunity. I don't think we're going to do it in a year, in a day. I'm sorry. I think that it's going to take a little bit more than that. I think maybe by springtime, we'll have something for the board to accept as a plan. And then as you think about next year, and as we think about next year, we'll define the work that we're doing, particularly over the next five years. And then it needs to be revisited again, so. So whenever you get a chance to figure out the send, Kevin, three names, and then that would be appreciated.
That's awesome. So December eleventh, and what time? We don't know yet, but it's likely to start in quite early in the morning. In just before date of time.
Kevin, agree.
Any other questions?
Yes, Mr. Jannelli.
Kevin? The twentieth, do you look for about twenty-five stakeholders to attend outside the board members, correct?
Yes, including the two of your board members.
Oh, okay. The, are they going to be looking at the mission statement we have? Or, so, what information? What I'm trying to get at is perhaps it might be a good idea to send them whatever information we already have so they can pre-read it, and then come to the meeting a little bit well-versed, you know, at least to know what we had so far, and they can make any adjustments, tweaks to it. But just bring them up to date.
We agree, and all my colleagues are nodding in approval, because they all said the same thing to me at the meeting earlier this week.
Okay, thank you.
You know, have a good reading, members. So the timing is great, so when we get that list, of course, we're sure, you know, we'll all review it as well as we move forward, because we need to learn the problems of that thing right now. It's always nice to have more eyes on things.
No, I wanted to sort of go back to the spotlight your school?
Yes.
If this is okay. I want to thank Dr. Sayer for putting this together and revisit, because we did have a conversation about this. And it wasn't not to limit, it was to get more work that we needed to do because of board and focus on some other things. But I, my question would be, this, this can be turned around if a school decides at a particular time it's going to be open, that they're not going to show, and we want to get some information from another school we were in the meeting.
Oh.
Okay, so that's all.
That goes without saying. This is a special reason to have someone. This was just the structure they all got.
Good, thank you.
I just want to add to Cooper's comments that during our workshop, we, I think the intent of changing the schedule of the spotlight your schools also is that there's a number of times where we have members of the cabinet or other district staff present to us very dense, data-driven presentations that we'd just like to have more time to understand, to go through it, and study, and do our due diligence when it comes to looking at those results. And we just feel that that would be a more appropriate use of our time to protect the interests of the district for us to be able to have that time to do more board work when it comes to those instances.
We will be, yes, on the chairperson reporter.
Can I just ask a question about the stakeholder meetings? Will that be an open meeting?
I don't know. I don't, I don't know how we typically have done it here.
We'll, we can talk about that. I mean, there's no, there isn't any reason to explore, accept space parking kind of stuff. It's not a, it's not my meeting, my meeting being, the captain meeting is supposed. Your meetings are open, this could be something, you know, we could think about it, but the more people that know what our issues are, I don't think it can hurt. So we'll talk about that. We're trying to find a venue as well, so.
Do it at the Black Box. Do it at the Black Box.
Well, we thought about that, but yesterday when I was there with the superintendent, we couldn't park, apart from this horrendous.
Give a day off.
So anyway, she'll get it done, she'll find a way for us. But we talked about that, but there's any need, not that folks can't show.
Anybody else have something? Okay. So we have the three board members for December eleventh, if you guys, anybody wants to consider doing that or whatever. Okay, we're going to do.
Do what?
Volunteers right now. One, two, three. Okay, so yes, so we have Mrs., but anybody care to be an alternate, in case somebody can't make it?
That's what we're talking about.
Oh, okay, well, we have Mrs. Cooper, Ms. Palmaras, and Mr. Jannelli.
I could be the alternate.
Mrs. Jannelli will be the alternate. I would assume that if everybody wanted to go, they're all invited, right?
Right.
Perfect. All right.
The statement was that if anybody would like to attend, it could be yours.
Can you give me the names again? Because first it was three, and then Mr. Jannelli said you have to be an alternate.
Right, so Mrs. Cooper and Ms. Palmaras, and then Mr. Jannelli as an alternate. And if anybody else would like to attend.
Oh. I thought you needed three and an alternate.
No, I think two, two alone and an alternate.
Okay, thank you.
Perfect. The board vacancy interview date, I don't know if everybody here, as far as we are still. Yeah, there's two people.
They have to, I think, tomorrow.
Yes, tomorrow's the last day for application. If it looks like we're going to remain at two people, we'd like to do, we'd like to do the interview, and we want to get the vote and the approval on the fourteenth, the next meeting, November fourteenth. Does anybody feel the need to do more interview time than something previous to that board meeting?
Only that we have scheduled a policy meeting at six o'clock before the next board meeting. Can we do the interviews at five?
So we have, okay, so we have a policy meeting.
From six.
On eleven fourteen.
Yes.
From six to seven.
Yes.
Is everybody okay with five o'clock then for interview? Okay. That, that's a, yes, November fourteenth. So do the interview then, the policy meeting, and then we can, to get the approval on the meeting, the regular meeting on the fourteenth. So if that works for everybody, so five o'clock. Five to six, six to seven, seven to eleven. Perfect. The CAE caps convention is November sixteen, seventeen in Groton. Anybody, has any, I don't know if anybody's signed up for it, or has it gone on, I haven't laughed. Yeah, that kind of is not good for me. It would be nice to have somebody to participate. I mean, I think I was the only, I was the only person to participate last year. Unfortunately, I can't participate this year. It would be nice to have a representative, I don't know, my schedule. All right. Board reports, I need communications comments, anybody?
We have a policy meeting and a sites and facilities committee meeting, but most of the board was there. They didn't participate, but you know, they didn't need to, but we did have. The policy changes will be for the first reading on your next board agenda. CAE is also going to review our entire policy manual for us and come back with to us what are the changes that need to be done. And the sites and facilities, we dredged up our space utilization analysis, I believe it was two thousand nine. Two thousand seven, excuse me, two thousand seven. We looked at that over, the update on summer projects, we looked at the school lunch and rental fund activities. Rich Jolberg gave us a, an update on the summer projects that was done. And we asked that the superintendent look at the magnet stool and give us a report back.
Would be nice. Who else? Mr. Jannelli?
Just a follow-up. I think last week, we met on Saturday, the board members with the gentleman from CAE. What are we doing for subsequent meetings when we left there? I thought there were going to be follow-ups with Dr. Pascarella, and then with Rob. What's the schedule on that?
December would be there.
Is that the day? Day of?
But isn't that what, what that whole discussion was about?
Go to a schedule day, something else for that, isn't you?
That whole discussion was about using, using that day to come up with a five-year strategic plan. You'll be on that committee for us.
So what, let me just.
So we're not going to, just wanted to stay, we're not going, we're going to substitute. This is December eleventh meeting in lieu of, we're still going through our conversations? Or, I'm confused. She can get this, or anything?
I think whatever they come out with, and the board's going to have, when you're setting your goals, that was the purpose. At least I understood from Rachel, that we would create the goals for the upcoming year. Is that not?
Right, right.
So you would have the data that the captain's talking about, think about your goals for the upcoming time. At a board workshop to do that, I think that was the discussion.
That was, yes. And I want to think we should have three meetings back-to-back on the same day.
Do you, do you want to have, do you want to postpone one of those meetings? Or do you want to do the whole separate day for the interview? You're already talking about for the fourteenth, having the interview, the policy meeting, and the regular board meeting?
November fourteenth.
Yeah. The first one's, in theory, not really a meeting, it's just the interview of the two or.
Okay, that's on the fourteenth. And then do the continuation of our goals as was the board.
Yeah, the policy meeting. So it really needs to be the interview, policy meeting, board meeting.
It's not the same thing. That policy meeting is a continuation of what we had earlier today. Not anything to do with our board retreat.
On December eleventh, we're, they're going to convene a workshop of stakeholders in our community and, which you will be a part of because you volunteered. And then they're, they're going to have a strategic planning session for a five-year goal plan for our school district going forward, and making a mission statement, making goals. And then from that meeting that they have in. And then, from that meeting that they have, and you have with them, then we can have our meeting further into the next year to set our goals so that we are together.
I guess if all the members of the committees are agree with that, I, I can go with that.
That one meeting on December 11th, what we're scheduled for a day, do you think you're going to come up with everything you're looking to do one day, and that's going to be our attempt to have?
It's going to be ongoing. I'm sure that's why, that's why Sal said we wouldn't have anything done until springtime. So, our goals will not be set really until, for the following year.
The hope is you set the goals so that, that when everybody starts creating their plans for next year, principals are, they'll have an idea of where we're going with it before we leave.
That's fine.
It's really fine that alignment, right? When you discuss that, the district goal, goals are set, and then we determine our board goals, but also there's a difference also, the differentiation of some of our board goals internally and the external board goals.
Right, so, we need a workshop to discuss our board goals and to continue the conversation we had at our workshop?
Yes.
Yes. So, we need to set another workshop.
We do.
That's what I was getting at.
I think that's what we're trying to get at.
So, yes, you can go forward with that.
Yes. And we can have simultaneous discussions.
So, what, so we're looking for a, a date for another workshop, but in what timeframe are people looking for those?
Before the holidays, if?
Before the holidays, post the December 11th meeting, or before that?
Well, see, it's not going to impact our retreat. We can have it before.
You may want to wait until after. I was just going to say, post the 14th?
Yeah, after the 14th meeting. Then we have another meeting on the 28th of November, and the meeting following that is December 5, but that starts at 5:30. That's the annual meeting. So, yes, sir?
The workshop, you were saying for Bob to come back to say?
Yes, that was, that was the understanding, like we were even saying, we were having him come back. To do some initial discussion.
I don't know, I just want to turn, and are you thinking about Saturday, or are you thinking about an alternate Wednesday workshop?
How long do we think we need?
Which will be just a board workshop on goals? Are you thinking Saturday?
Is this something that we cannot do at our annual meeting, with their 5:30?
No, we can't do it.
So, if, if we were to do it at the November 28th meeting, how much time do we need? Do we do it before that meeting, or do we need more time and set it up on a standalone date?
I think two hours or, I think two hours is enough.
So, if we were to commit, if we were to start the November 28th meeting at 5:00, and just do it in the two hours preceding the meeting, would that?
That's fine.
For everybody, as opposed to having a separate standalone date? All right, so, we're going to schedule for November 28th, 5:00 for the workshop, and then we have to make sure that we can, that I'm available for.
If he's not, do you still have it? That's what I'm thinking.
That's a good question. Does everybody who is in that workshop feel okay if Bob's not available, that we continue the, that we have workshop without him?
We need, but we need somebody. We need somebody to feel okay with.
Okay.
And if Bob can't come, could we, yeah, why should I have other people?
We could do that. Who? Okay. All right, so 5:00 on 11/28. Perfect.
Would I feel that Gary gets all of our information, so she can send out emails to everyone, please?
Absolutely. You are more efficient. All right. Yes, it is amazing. Do we have any executive session?
No.
No.
Yay. So, if, if there's nothing else, and we have all of our mentions, Ms. Palmaras?
I just want to share a community event that I think would be useful for ourselves as a board, or also as part of staff or community members. Westline is going to have a workshop on working with diverse student populations and understanding social and cultural differences. It's a free workshop, it's supposed to be November 16th at 10:00 a.m. in room 212 at the campus center at the University of West High at 43 Lake Avenue Extension in Danbury. Again, it's a free workshop on working with diverse student populations and understanding social and cultural differences. It's going to be in the morning on that day, I think, I believe it's a Saturday, it's also the, the weekend of the CAE convention. I just figured it'd be a nice event for staff, if they want to attend, or if any of us, members of the board and the community. It's free of charge, and if you go to WCSC website for events, you can register there.
Should you make sure that they get some information, to send out to onboard members,
I'll do it.
Thank you.
I said it was the 16th, then you mentioned Saturday.
I'm not sure 16th is Saturday.
November 16th is Friday. All right, well, there's nothing further.
I make a motion, I'm going to adjourn.
Motion made, seconded, all of you. You're here.